Ain't nobody out here claiming perfection. I'm saying, and all I'm really saying is if we wanna see something better, we gotta try to be something better.
So funny.
Okay, so.
Impromptu.
We are here, and if you don't mind, tell us who you are, tell us what you stand for, tell us what your goals are for the city of Compton.
My name is Alicia Rivers, and I'm running for Compton City Council because I believe that Compton is divine land. We are a globally known city. We have that global identity, and I believe that there's nothing but greatness that comes out of this city, and that we can be a part of that change to make it turn back into what it was. We can make this an economic powerhouse. We can make Compton the blueprint for urban success. Um, why? Because we are already a city full of urban success. We just need that to be reflected in policy and in our leadership.
Okay. If you don't mind, share with us some of your history here in Compton, like um, how long you been here? What what is some of your experiences been? What is your experience like for your city? For you? How you been here?
My family has been in the house that I currently live in since the sixties. We were, um, it was owned by a white family for a year or two, and then my uh, great aunt and uncle moved into that home or purchased the home and during, of course, White Flight and all of that. And we've just ne- we've never left. Um, my grandparents, military background from the Navy. They've lived in several different parts of Compton, and this has just always been home base. Um, I was born and raised in San Diego. I um, spent a lot of time in Compton because my mom was a single parent. So you can imagine, anytime I was out of school for anything longer than a weekend, I was in Compton. My full summers, my uh, you know, spring break, Christmas break, and and even most weekends, I was here. I still have a great deal of friendships that I've had since second grade, third grade, high school even. Um, a lot of my adult friends are in Compton. I've been doing business around my city. I went to Compton College, uh, worked in Compton City Hall, worked in the Public Works Engineering Division, uh, working to beautify the city. That's really where I fostered my love for civic engagement and public policy because it was there where, you know, when you're an intern, they make you do everything. So I'm answering the phones, I'm talking to the people, I'm the liaison between the design team and the project management team. So just getting into the nitty gritty of all of it, and actually being uh, really hands-on and trying to beautify the place that I actually lived in, was something that I did that that stuck with me and never left. So from there, I was just like, okay, well, my entire life, I wanted to study law and policy and and politics was just, you know, the doors were opening in that in that direction. So I just walked right into it. Um, and it it also just made more sense because I've always wanted to be a lawyer because I actually wanted to change the laws and I didn't wanna uphold the existing law. So policy was really the place for me in the first place.
Wow. So 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 did you actually go into law? Like, are you?
No, I I got my mass, my uh, bachelor's in criminology and sociology. Um, but then after that, I started my master's program in uh, public administration. And then, yeah, and then, cause I'm just like, alright, let me just get a get a good handle on government and the bureaucracy of all of it and uh, city budgets and comparing city budgets and seeing how they operate versus other cities and just getting into the nitty gritty. I've always had, um, I've always been fascinated with the mechanics of the legal system and how that just plays on everyday life. So, you know, having that interest um, and just all the things that go into that in the background is like, that's where I'm at today. So I'm like, I have all of that knowledge, I have resources, I'm in the community, I'm like, okay, I can get people engaged, I know the voice of the community. Let's let's make things happen. It's actually not that difficult. It's just having the right people in place with the right intentions.
You know, you um, I'm listening, I'm listening. I did not expect this.
No, okay. I asked the, these cameras are so impromptu. This is not planned.
You said you were just gonna come meet me. You showed up, you stood exactly behind what you said, and I had to cut these cameras on, and you went. You're an impressive individual.
Thank you.
You are. I think what really is um, standing out earthquake.
I feel it.
I think what really is standing out about you to me is your age and your passion, which in Compton far as politics is concerned, the age gap has been really significant with our both, both our voting blocks. And then just the interest of those that are even in leadership. Mainly, I wanna say they're usually over fifty years old. And um, usually that's the age of the voting block. They're all over somewhere in that age bracket, I think over forty-five or whatever.
Oh yeah, sixty plus.
Sixty plus, okay. So my uh, curiosity is, how do people, how would a person like you draw in those younger voters? And then um, what can they expect of you, given your um, intense uh, involvement? Um, your education, your understanding of how politics work, policy change, what can they expect?
I think that one thing that I've already proven is that I'm relentless. So I'm willing to see things through. I'm the person that's going to, you know, get the court documents and do all the tedious work that it's going to take to actually get to an end result. So I have the energy and the persistence and which is really important. But most importantly, I think what people can expect from me is to actually listen to the residents and collaborate with the residents. I by no means believe that I have all of the answers. I have the will, and I have the know-how, and I have the education. But it's a, it's a, it's gonna be several different individuals that are gonna have to come together in order to make um, the turn that we really need to. We've started, but that's been years in the making. A lot of people are like, Compton's not changing, there's nothing that like, you don't even know the amount of work that we've been doing in the background just to get to where we are now. And that's just because of the few people that are involved. So your first question was, what are we gonna do to involve the youth? Because Compton is a very young city. The average um, age of our resident is really is twenty-seven. The average voter is sixty-five. So that is a huge disconnect. So I think what we have to do is show people the direct correlation um, from their vote and a result. So I probably like vote to result, like that's just in my mind, I'm like, okay, we have to talk to the people, and the fluff is not going to work. I go and I knock on doors, and I've been rattling fences for people to come out and talk to me, and the thing is, people have other pressing concerns. People are trying to live, they're trying to get, you know, they have issues with their homes. They have all the, you know, you can go and talk to somebody, and they're like, look, but I got this sidewalk issue. They're concerned with what they're concerned with. With all due respect, I completely understand, and they also don't believe that the government is going to be the solution to their problem. They don't believe that voting will give them a result that is to their benefit. So that is on the responsibility of our leadership, people like yourself, to constantly in their face, show the correlation, like, oh, you have a problem with that? Well, you know, this is because of this, and this is how you connect those dots. So because policy is everywhere, and it affects everybody in every single way. It's just, it's not as, it's never been as in-your-face as it was when we went to grocery stores and could didn't all of a sudden have grocery bags or had to pay ten cents for a bag. It's something like that that has to get in your face, like, oh wait, voting affects me. But even that was a measure on a law, on a state level. You know what I mean? There's, as I'm sitting here today, local policy is what matters. Local policy is the streets that we drive on, it's the parks in our neighborhood, it's the resources that are available and around us. It's the, it's the the amount of trash receptacles that you have here versus in another city. It literally determines our quality of life. So the more that people like yourself and myself that are in the community and of the community can express that relentlessly, that is what's going to play a big part in that. But also, you have to meet people where they are. I believe that people, you know, cause people spend millions of dollars trying to figure out how to get us civically engaged. In order to get people civically engaged, you have to lift them out of poverty. That's that. I will, so so my focus is economic development. So my focus is changing the aesthetics of this city because that is what changes the mind of the people. When they start see, they see environment that we create for them, you know what I mean? And then in one moment, you know, we judge, we may judge our residents and and whatnot, or judge the people by what they do. But you can't really judge people when you have them in a hostile environment. Right now, the city is 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 a bit of a hostile environment. It's not a welcoming, a safe environment, not for the residents, not for developers, not for businesses. So we have to change the environment that we're hosting, and from there, we need to start pushing out good, being transparent, inviting people to be a part of conversations, hearing them out. What are your concerns? What do you need? So I mean, part of that, me going out to the introducing myself to different business owners, giving them my car, letting them know this is what I do. Um, I'm here, you know, let's let's have dialogue. What are your concerns? I'm not here to pitch you anything, I'm here to learn from you. What do you need help with? What? Because, you know, specifically, the better your business does, the better for everyone. Because why? Those are tax dollars, that's tax revenue. So there's no reason why we should not be rolling out the red carpet for our businesses to make sure that they are doing well because that's a direct benefit for everybody.
Okay, so so everything that you said, I'm just grabbing and holding like, oh my god. So uh, constituent like myself, well, I was a constituent. I have properties here in Compton, but I know only living in Compton, so let's start with that. I would ask the person like you, from my perspective, I've owned over ten properties here in Compton. Compton is the hardest city to deal with when it comes to City Hall, building and planning, whether you wanna add something, whether you need permits. It has been a challenge for years. I'm forty-five, I started buying in Compton at twenty-five, and it's always been the same regular world, roundabout. And even lately, there have been some situations where it seemed like the local investor, or I guess small-time investor, was kinda ousted, and they brought in these big investors for these same projects, and I was gonna do them. Right across the street, right here on M and M's, where the old M and M's was, right down the street on Compton Boulevard. And I went to City Hall, and I paid lawyers, and I paid architects, and we did, and they said, we just can't do it. But now it's happening. So um, my question about that type of scenario is, um, it's always said the city leaders are kinda embedded with or have like backdoor situations with larger investors because of opportunities that they may bring or whatever. But that also makes the constituent or the member of our city feel like the opportunities just aren't here to invest, or the reasoning, or or why would I invest in a city that really makes it harder for me to exist here as an investor? If I'm gonna call myself that. Um, and and so that's one part of the scenario I want you to look at. I wanna make sure I I put this out there too. The other part is policies that you were talking about, far as um, lately, there have been a big issue with the street racing situation. I wanna know your take on that because I've been kinda keeping up with how nothing has been happening. So my question is how how the property investor or how the community investor is uh, addressed? Then the situation with the um, street racing, I'm never gonna get into potholes, cause I don't know how that happens, but that's the situation. And the last part to this is, why don't Compton have some kind of policy to support dispensaries? Wouldn't that create money? So I know those three different things.
Oh no, but I love it. Let's go. I got answers for all three. Okay, first, boom, economic development and how we treat our developers and our, the people that should be be able to purchase property and build and invest in this land. That should be the model. Compton and all the people that we've produced, most of them don't live here anymore. They, what we want is for them all to come back and own some piece of land. There's no reason why we shouldn't have, all these big names should have some type of big business here that is driving our economy. But we don't, we don't treat them with any respect. From what I'm seeing, I've met, I've unfortunately met with two different developers um, already, black, that have had horrific experiences, and when I'm listening to them, I'm like, yo, this is why we don't get anything done, because who has thousands of dollars to waste? And this is the thing, and the developers generally only go to cities where the city manager has been in place for five, ten-plus years because instability is is way too risky. You're asking someone to come in, purchase property, and then work with a body of people um, and trusting that they're not gonna come out with all these extra fees, which they generally do, which raises the cost of development, which means that's fewer developments that we can have done. It's not right for the people, it's not best for long-term development and relationship building. So for me, and I also, I work for the L.A. County Business Federation. We are a nonprofit grassroots advocacy organization that that advocates on behalf of our businesses. One of these things being major because we need development, but we can't have bureaucratic red tape costing more money because all that goes, that the those expenses get leaked out to the residents and the taxpayers. So it's not good for anyone. So one of my top priorities is streamlining our processes. We are extremely outdated in the way that we process within City Hall. Uh, we don't have, uh, we're not digitized. And so there's a lot of room to grow there. Also, um, that's why I'm excited about the new city manager because um, he changed the reputation of Barstow and made them like the hub, when really that was like nothing there, and then he brought out outlets and things like that. He left there and came to Compton. So and with the same hopes of changing the reputation. Well, if you're gonna change our reputation, that means you're changing our reputation on all fronts, including how we handle developers and businesses. For for me, I love big business, that's great, but we need to roll out the red carpet for our own. Anyone that is from this soil that wants to purchase or wants to invest or has a business, we should be having them here. That is, that is only beneficial to us. How do you get programs for the youth? Tax base. Anything that you want or anything that we're wanting to see, how do we fix our streets? Tax base. Right now, if we didn't have Measure P, which was just an additional sales tax on us, we would be in debt. We're paying our bills with Measure P, which means we don't have a large enough tax base in the city, which means we're not doing well when it comes to driving our businesses. We need to identify what key industries are we known for. We have a ton of warehouse space. There's a, there, there are certain avenues that we can really capitalize on, but we need to hone in on that and and invest it.
I wanna, real quick, while you're talking about that, how is it that we have some of the highest taxes in the state? In the state, property taxes, and I've had places in Riverside County, I've owned property in Lakewood, uh, North Edwards, we're high, we're high. We're high by more than fifteen to twenty percent.
It makes sense. I, people are like, oh my god, how are we paying such high taxes? How are we not? The bills have to be, because the bills have to be paid, and you're either going to tax your residents or you're going to bring in tax dollars. Those are the only two ways to to generate revenue.
But bringing in tax dollars would look like these warehouses that's involved around Compton, and big, and large businesses.
Businesses, jobs, uh, making sure that our our residents are making seventy and eighty thousand dollars and up because they're they're able to purchase, that's their buying power within our ten square miles. That's how Compton used to function. Compton was a middle-class suburban city that had, we had what, J.C. Penney's and or Sears or whatever, all the different buildings and stores that we had here. So people worked here and they played here. That's how we were this booming economy. Plus geop- geographically, we're in the middle of everything. We have all freeways near us. So coming into Compton was always easy and inviting. Our our location hasn't changed. We have a college, we have an airport, we have a casino.
We have the Compton gateway.
Ex- exactly, but that was our last major development. Every city around Compton has been developed. Lynnwood, uh, Southgate even, they have newer developments because they have a stable council that is inviting and allows for those processes to be a lot more streamlined than what we've been doing. And with that, the first, the first thing first, that's going to take a stable city council to make that happen.
Okay, trip this. I wanna hear your take on these dispensaries.
Okay.
I wanna hear your take on the situation for um,
Street takeovers.
Street takeovers. And then I wanna slide into, I I'm just an outsider, I'm just a normal guy, right? But it always seemed like our council, our our city leaders are active with each other, and it almost appears publicly, you know?
It's embarrassing.
Yeah, come on, and it's us. So my thing is, how do we get past that? I'm saying to make things move or have some real motion, it has to be like a three? To two vote, something like that? Boom. So and so I I also, if you don't mind, explain to me, us, us, how that looks, because I mean, you needs to come in with alliances somehow. If not, we'll be stagnant.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
So give me what you got.
So we'll reverse engineer that, so we're gonna go back to.
Street takeovers and dispensaries.
Right. So with the dispensaries, right now, one, you, one of the things you mentioned was like, don't we want them here? Yes, but not now. We do not have the infrastructure in place to do them safely. We have them here, but they're like trap houses. They're not, they're not operating effectively. Um,
What would a safe dispenser look like?
A safe dispenser? With security? With with actual, and yeah, ma- mainly security. There is one over by my house on Atlantic that's that has been shot up five times, so people have died.
Okay, no. So what you saying, I love, however, my concern is, is that an easy fix? And the reason I'm saying this, first off, I I explain, I'm a street dude, right? Not to say I want one, but I would.
But here's the, here's the thing, I haven't finished though. There is grant funding out there that the state is providing to cities to help them get to a place where they can have saved dispensers and the infrastructure. And that goes, that's not just like security, that's also technology. Um, there, there's a, there are a lot more that go, I don't know all the details, but there's, there's a lot more in place that needs, that cities will need to help them get up to a place where they can have saved dispensers. So I'm all for that. I'm all for us getting into that position first and then having that. And with order, having having them zoned, they shouldn't be by schools, they shouldn't, you know, we should have um, certain areas in each district cause you don't want all the the dispensaries in one area, cause you know, people don't wanna travel that far to have to get what they need. Um, but then also, I want us to be organized and make, and and I don't know all the laws, but I want us to be growers. I feel like there's a, first of all, we have farm farmland, it only makes sense, and we are Compton, again, a global identity. It only makes sense for us to be manufacturing our own and not just selling it. Um, but having that infrastructure and doing it the right way is key. Now, obviously, at the moment, I have to respect the wish of the voters. Voters said they don't want dispensaries in Compton. Now, is that the actual sentiment of the city? I would assume not, but guess what? We didn't vote. So the the, what's on the charter as it stands now is dispensaries are not legal in Compton. At this moment, it's like, okay, that's fine because we don't have the infrastructure for it anyway. But I do believe in being prepared and changing that because that's way too much tax revenue that we're missing out on. Also, we are still, because there's still, there's some that have been shut down and some that are, you know, gated up and they're not opening, and that's great. But there are still some that are operating, and guess what? Anytime those police get called out, we're paying for that. So at the moment, there are dispensaries in Compton, but we're receiving none of the benefit for it, but we are paying for services for them to even exist.
First off, you said something before I turned these cameras on, and I thought you was bullshitting. You are brave. So the take, the stance that you are taking, I I'm, I have yet to hear anybody say that. So first off, kudos. But you go out on a limb, but that's bound, because that type of thought process in my mind is what's gonna draw the younger voters. Not necessarily the fact that everybody wants to be a grower, everybody wants more dispensary, but because it's fresh. And the generation before yours, ours, is, they don't see that. They don't see that. Not just the revenue part, but the plan to get there, and then the other pieces that it takes to support that. Congratulations. Like, that is, that is, that is. Okay, so boom. Street takeovers.
Street takeovers. So the big it, like, and I've been, I try to talk to people about it as much as possible, I think people may understand, just cause it's all over the news. The DA's race is crucial for our city. I think we all know when loitering was no longer criminalized because Long Beach Boulevard overnight. I live right off Long Beach Boulevard in Pauline. I live right across from Kelly Park, so I drive down Pauline. My normal route is to go down Pauline and turn off onto Long Beach Boulevard, right off, next to Sushi Kumiko. It is disgusting. I have a twelve-year-old son, he sees it, he's seen solicitation, he's, it's normalized to him now, which is absolutely ridiculous. And guess what? I will never go like nose-blind to it. Every time I drive down, I see it, it's, it's, it's extremely disturbing. It was actually, I was coming back from the gym one time, coming off of Atlantic, coming from, you know, freeway and going through Down Atlantic Drive to Pauline. I'm turning down Pauline, and there's a sex worker who's obviously dressed in her, you know, in her attire, barefoot, booking it down Pauline. And she looked, and obviously, I'm like, and I'm, she's running down, I'm like, are you okay? She's like, no! And she, she didn't even stop, she kept on going, so I'm like, okay, well, I, she said no, so now I have to do something, right? So I turned their car around, and um, she's like hi- hiding behind like one of the bushes off like Atlantic Drive. And you know, there's a little motel right there too. Um, and she was like, look at all, she looked like she was like fighting for her life. And she was like saying that he was like, somebody was looking for her, they they were coming. I was like, okay, well, okay, well, get in. So yes, she she got in the car. And so she got in, and as soon as she did the, she was like, he's right there. So then she jumps in the car, he's by, he's uh, riding behind, like following, so then I just stopped, and I literally started recording. I have the video on my phone, I started recording, cause she's on this side, and he's driving on the other side of me. And the older, older black man, he was like, I was just trying to help you, sister. And she was like, you, you tased me, you tried, you know, all this. And mind you, he tried to throw oil on her and burn her up. It was a whole situation, like I had to take her back to where, cause she didn't want me to sh- drop her off there. So he left, um, we went down Pauline, her, her shoe was off next to the can of oil that he tried to throw on her. It was like a whole situation. Um, so it is like that, and it was like literally on my morning home, just coming from the gym before I started my day. That was that. But the thing is, in that area, that's all you see around. And so that's just to tell you, it's not on Long Beach Boulevard, it's now coming into our neighborhoods. And so we think that that's not going to affect us on a greater level, like it already is. And just the fact that, you know, I've even, you know how many times I've actually seen the the exchange, the transaction in broad daylight? I see them out more at six, seven, ten, twelve in the afternoon than I do in the evening with no shame.
There's no hiding it no more.
There's no hiding it. So I say all of that to say, the DA's race is crucial for our city. Because otherwise, you know, there are other cities that are like trying to take legal action to try to, you know, go around uh, the decriminalization. Um, but if we just vote and make sure that in March and November, we actually get a DA, which is anybody but but got gone, fortunately, they've all um, are, you know, detest, detest his uh, ordinances. So that that is gonna be crucial because also, um, if they're not really pursuing charges in the DA's office, then that is why the sheriff's office is like. Exactly. So they're not, so that's the the breakaway. People are like going to council, like, hey, why aren't you guys doing anything? But it's like, okay, yes, we can write. But it's like, okay, yes, we can write policy, but we need law enforcement to uphold that policy. It doesn't do anything if we write something on paper, we can't throw the paper at them. At this, what do you want this, the the council person to come out there and be like, hey, you guys need to stop that, that's not what how this works. We need law enforcement to intervene, but law enforcement is not going to intervene if they intervene and nothing happens after that. It's a catch and release, so people have to understand the chain of command and how things actually flow and getting things done. And the partnership and collaboration that takes place, so, um, if we want our city back, we want, uh, the. And even when it comes to human trafficking, the, the organizations, cause I was like, okay, let's go to organizations that go out there and and touch them. They're like, yo, we've eased up, because ever since that ordinance passed or came about. It's dangerous for us to be out there.
Okay, that's gonna lead me to my next question, which is why we're here, it's but, you are a phenomenal individual. So then we ended up going all the way into this because of, because of how you're built. However, I'm here, cause I wanna talk about the support for the grassroots organizations that are effectively doing great things in the city. And in my opinion, at least, that is what it's going to take to help really, um, um. Turn the curve for a lot of what goes on, whether it's prostitution, gang intervention, gang prevention. Cause it's the dark hours or the after school hours, um, and then what our kids are exposed to, that I feel. Um, is what really, really, really puts the stain on our city.
But see, gang intervention is different though, because I see, I to, when it comes to street takeovers, smashing grabs and the prostitution. The answer is the DA's office, cause we've all already said, we don't want this in our city, we call and do all of that. Gang intervention and and that aspect of it, I believe you solve that by going to our communities. Our neighborhoods with opportunity. So I, if you, you know, even when I look at this, like the street takeovers and all of that, we have to. As assuming these are Compton kids, you know, I hear they're from everywhere, but I, you know, I don't think it's. Compton kids are in the house reading books and they ain't out there doing the, doing it too, you know, they're they're part, they're part, they're part of it, um. We have to understand and take accountability for the fact that we created these little monsters. What do we have for them? We, a lot of ki- kids in Compton love sports. Where are our sports teams? My son loves football, he's been born and raised in Compton, but we, he plays for the Braves. You know, prior to that, we were playing in in Long Beach. There's, there are no opportunities here for children, so. We can't sit here and really condemn them when we're not giving them opportunity. Now, with the gangs and all of that, I, I believe, I, and you know what? I know that if you were to go to some of the homies with a seventy, eighty thousand dollar job, they'll put them guns down. They'll go to work, give them the opportunity. I know that for a fact. So it will, that goes back to, we want people civically engaged, we need to lift them out of poverty, you just go to them and meet them and meet their needs.
So we all know that, though, that is the basic recipe for, um, change when it comes to, especially those that are behind. Like in the gangs and drugs and all that kinda stuff, that kinda lifestyle. Um, that is a factual, in my opinion, you present some options and opportunities and people will usually wanna go that route. What I am mostly concerned with with the response from our leaders is, there are organizations that are here that are passionate. That are, um, driven, that are involved in the trenches during the work. They, they are small, I'm starting a basketball team over here, I'm over here doing mentoring, I'm over here doing gang intervention. However, their knowledge of how to bring in the resources to create real lanes of opportunities or a real league. Or a real, um, mentoring program where these kids can be exposed to different things or transition into, uh, large scale opportunities, whether it be. School, trade school, like all those type of things, the collaborative networking skills. And the support that's needed to build that foundation is not there. The heart is there, but the knowledge of how to run a grassroots organization and to. For that grassroots organization to support the city, that relationship is what I feel is missing. Now, some years ago, I heard that there was a effort, um, and the mayor at the time, Ms. Brown, was involved and she got a lot of people involved. For as, you know, start your organization and we will help support it. And I heard that for a minute it was going, I'm not sure, cause I really wasn't involved, however, there are organizations that right now, I am intimately involved with. So that's why I'm working to establish a true network for that grassroots effort. But what is needed from leadership is, according to all these groups, all of these organizations, is the support of. Our city leaders to, um, not just say, we want, um, basketball leagues and football leagues and sports. Cause we know we need it, but there are organizations that's here trying to do that, they just don't have the wherewithal or the guidance to actually do it. We need our city leaders, honestly, to really get in bed with those grassroots organizations, because that, to me, they're doing it. Because we need it, you want it because it's needed, but the connection of, this is how we build it, is not there. It's not there. There are over forty that I've identified, that was here in this building a few weeks ago. Uh, grassroots from Compton, doing things in Compton. And I brought some, um, grant writers out here to teach them to, how to structure your organization, how to, how to be an organization, you know?
So you'll probably be really excited about this.
Exciting me again, you've been doing.
So my first year working for the LA County Business Federation, though my job, um, at the time was the membership and grants manager. So I managed, we're an organization of o- over three hundred business groups. Um, a hundred and forty investor companies like Kaiser, Google, Verizon, um, you name it, they're all members. Now, I manage the nonprofit association, so there's two different types of memberships. Nonprofit associations are the trade associations, chambers of commerce, um, and, um, all of those entities, right? Any group, a nonprofit with dues paying members. So when my first, uh, you know, week there, I'm making phone calls and I'm like, hey, you know, just introducing myself. And I'm getting to know, you know, what are your issues? We advocate for your businesses, right? So we learned, like, and this is right post COVID, a lot of chambers were shutting down. They were even expressing to me that they didn't even know how to advocate for their members, which is their job. So that's where where we come in as their strategic partners, so I'm like, okay, we're the business federation. We need you guys to be knowledgeable, we need our chambers of commerce to be effective. I'm sorry, impactful and resourceful. Why? Because businesses and entrepreneurs are supposed to be able to go to their chamber of commerce. And get whatever they need to make their business successful, whether it's help with permitting and licensing, a business ordinance. Uh, or like you said, the know-how or just fulfilling, um, some, something on their agenda. They weren't able to do that, so I developed the Advocacy Academy.
Advocacy Academy, talk about it.
So I built the Advocacy Academy where we educate business groups and their members. On the ci- politics one-on-one and the civic process, but not just like, oh, you know, here are our branches of government. How do you advocate for your business? So in each cohort, we get to know each of the businesses that are there, hey, what are your issues? And we teach you how to use media marketing, we teach you how to testify, we teach you the process and how to go about. Getting your needs met, but in, it's to give you that good overview, but then also, at the end of the program. We partner you with the Multicultural Business Alliance and they give you a free, um, uh, workforce development. So you, on our side, we're teaching you how to advocate and navigate this bureaucratic world, right, and get things done. After that, we partner you with a workforce development coach that comes to you, assists you with your whole framework. Of your structured organization, but then also your members as well. So then they can do it, uh, they go to your city, they, um, they base everything and they tailor everything for the laws and the ordinances. In your specific area, so, and and, cause like, I I'm someone, I don't like big generalized things, talk to me about me. So this is, it's not, it's not like, oh, this one cookie course where you go in and you just look at these videos. We actually work with you hand in hand, um, to get done, so, um. I'm really proud of that, it's something, this, this was the first year of it, we've had, uh, two classes already leave. And we are actually, we have actually policy and legislative initiatives that we're still working with them with, that have moved over into our subcommittees. And we're continuing to advocate on their graduation projects, which they act, in order to graduate, you had to come forward with like. Okay, so what are you going to be advocating for in your community? What are we helping you with? And that's, that's how you get to that next step.
Wow, but 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 here's the thing, as phenomenal as that response was, can you bring it to Compton? Create, are you willing to? The whole point of this today was to see what it is. I understand truly how important it is for grassroots organizations to have the support of their leadership in the city. I didn't realize this till recently, alright? But it's imperative, especially when you are, I wanna say illiterate to the process, but your heart is there. You know, so. Will you do that?
Absolutely, absolutely. That means taking what you did, taking the framework of the Advocacy Academy and creating something specifically for Compton. That it's that easy, it's finding out the needs of the organization without, you know, obviously, having that first understanding. I think first we need to understand like what specifically, there, there is a gap, but what is the gap? The gap in knowledge comes from what? So you might need assistance with your framework of your individual business, do you not know how to collaborate? I think each individual person, each individual organization is gonna have something different. And I believe that it's important that we tailored whatever that is to each one of those, cause that's the only way we're gonna be effective. And it also starts with transparency, because I'll be honest, I don't know half of the organizations in Compton. Why? Because they don't have buildings, or they don't have name fronts, or so it's like, and and I, I think I meet new ones like every day. So they're here, resources are here, but we're so disconnected and we're unaware of each other. So we need to first get a lay of the land and figure out what, what is here right now, what is going on and then build from that.
You know, this is probably gonna sound like a retarded question, but I'm gonna throw it. You, you are, you are educated, you are, um, you think outside the box, you are young. What is it why you chose to run for city council instead of a position like a mayor or even something in higher government? For a city council, like why, why, why city council, why not go for the big C? You, you have the, the wherewithal, you have the knowledge, you have the vision, so why city council person?
Because Compton is a global identity. People ask me that same question all the time, like why Compton or or what's next? I tell everyone, I don't have to do anything else. If I change Compton, I change the world.
I feel that.
Because we are, name a place, anywhere in the world that you can go and they don't know who we are. Everybody, all eyes are on us all the time. There is this nineteen sixty-seven article by the LA Times when Douglas Dollar Hyde was elected, um, first black mayor. You know, this side of Mississippi and who did the first black police chief and the first black this, and then we became the first black community. They, in that article, it said that what we do in Compton will be replicated and set the standard for what they do in Newark, New Jersey. And named a whole bunch of other black communities, so my thought is. The community that I care about, I care about my people all over. Of course, I am a humanitarian, I love people all over the world, but all I have to do is focus on Compton. Spend the next four to eight years building this community up into that urban utopia, make us the blueprint of what urban success looks like. And then I can go around the world teaching other communities how to do what we do here, but I believe that if we can't do it. It probably can't be done. If it can't be done here, it's not gonna be able to be done anywhere. We have ten square miles. We have local control, we have our own fire department, we have our own college, we have an airport.
You gave up our police department.
We, but that, I believe, and I don't, I believe we can have it back. There are, did, we, we can get create, we, we have a police department with the. Goals with the, um, school board and the college board. So we haven't completely given up our control, but we can have that back. We first need to do right by the fire department, because we, that is, you know, that is under our control now. And we, we're in that, we're going in the right direction, they were out of contract about for like five years, um. Working in deplorable conditions, but I believe that if we can fix the fire department and make sure that they are at a, you know. A livable standard and that they have the right wages and the amount of, uh, uh, individual staff properly. Then that will allow the community to trust us with having our own police department again.
One last thing before you could just say anything else you wanna say, but I'm just curious, um, with your energy and your mindset. Do you think that your ideas are even practical with the kinda council that we have? I, I, Andre's pretty young, but I started going to those council meetings recently. And I, you know, I hear things, I see things, I pay attention. There's a lot of division and, um, of course, it is spilled out publicly, uh, who don't deal with who and, you know, it's, it's things, I guess. And how do we, how do we get the people to trust the leadership in our city? When it's so. Just damaged. How would you be, how would that, how would, what do you bring to the table to make that difference?
For one, I don't believe in, uh, public spectacles. I don't do public acts of catharsis, I don't believe in, um. Putting out that type of reputa- reputation, um, there are people that I don't get along with or don't like for several reasons, you would never know that. I, I know how to be a professional and also number one, I bel- in this space. From day one, ever since I've been involved, just from, you know, who brought me into politics and it's, you know, helped groom me into the person that I am today. The number one, the first thing they ever said to me is if you're not willing to put Compton first, don't even do it, let's start there. You going into this, in order for you to be different than what has come before you, the number one rule, always put Compton first. That means putting Compton above your own personal interest, so it may not feel good to me, but I have to know if this is what's best for the city. To move us forward and I have to be willing to do that, and that includes working with people that I may not like. Why? Because collaboration is necessary, so just putting that to the side and putting Compton first is number one. And absolutely, I believe that my, um, my pathway is practical, cause it's, one, it's common sense. Um, it's, it's creative, it's, it's using the tools that we have, it's also following models that have already, you know, have already done it. These are proven success, I believe in following paths of proven success also, um. And I think with, with all of that, that is, that is definitely going to be different, because I'm going to be willing to work with those individuals. On the council. Now, I already come in with a, with a second, people already assume like, why, it's not a secret. Andre and I, we have the same vision, we don't have the same priorities, we don't think the exact same way, but the collaboration is there. So I know that, and and one, we don't always agree, that's for sure, but we do have conversation and dialogue. And we're always able, from wherever we are, to meet somewhere and find, uh, that common ground, so that is, that is key. That neither one of us are yes men, that's just gonna follow the beat of the drum of the other, we will challenge one another and we will work to get to. Um, the best resolution for whatever we're doing, um, and then also, I believe. I believe that there are other individuals on the council that now are level headed. I do believe that we have removed the churn and burn politics, the ones that will just let it all burn for the sake of that. I believe that we have removed those individuals from the council. Um, there are individuals on the council that may not agree or may not wanna take risks. But the beautiful thing about that is, um, I believe that those that are on the council that may not be in that, um, same mindset. They can be swayed by public opinion, so if the community is coming forward and they say, they're saying they want this, then I do believe that they will do the right thing. They can be swayed by public opinion. So if the community is coming forward and they say, they're saying they want this, then I do believe that they will do the right thing. And also I'm not, I'm, I'm not trying to do anything that's gonna harm the city. So anything that I present is only going to be a positive and it's only going to be a benefit. So. To be against that, I don't mind. So for that, I don't mind putting, you know, my, my plans and my perspectives out there for the community. Because I'm gonna be do, operating the same way behind the scenes.
You are different, I'll give you that. Is there anything else that you wanna add to this interview? I really am grateful that you took the time to come out. Um, I wanna, can, can I sit next to you?
This is so unplanned.
So I, I don't wanna sit here long, I just wanted to make sure I got a moment with you on camera cuz at some point I'm going to like um. And then um, I want to, again, uh, I'm grateful. I'm grateful for what you're saying, I'm grateful for what you plan on doing. Um, of course, I hope the best for you and your endeavor. Uh, the things you are saying, I think that is needed, you know, um. Different people that have, two in particular that are running for that same seat have reached out to me. I met one here, another we're supposed to talk, uh, I think is next week. I want you to know that it is my goal to really be, um. I just wanna see our, this city, our city. Be what I know it can be, you know, but I know it's gonna take fresh blood. I know it's gonna take um. Resources, people that know how to lead, people that understand policy. I hope the best for you. I do. I mean that with everything in me because maybe sometime. Our people, you know, we, we struggle with being united. So. Is there anything else that you would like to add to this interview?
Yes, um, speaking to the part where of, you know, the importance of global identity. I am the advocacy manager for the arts, entertainment, sports and Olympics committee. So my job at Biz Fed as of um, January first, um, and going forward is Olympic preparedness. So that is one hundred percent a part of one of the top three priorities in my platform.
The Olympics has come in two thousand.
Twenty-eight, yeah, absolutely. And then we have the World Cup before then.
Can you repeat that please?
I am the arts, entertainment, sports and Olympics uh, committee advocacy manager for the LA County Business Federation. And my number one priority starting January first has been to make sure that we. Uh, we have to turn that over. See, I said it good the first time. Uh, it's uh, it's, it's focusing on Olympic preparedness. So um, not, one of my top priorities. Is making sure that Compton is prepared for the Olympics. We are not currently a host city. Um, I don't believe that that's out of the running to change, but what we do know is no matter what's happening. When people are traveling here, they're going to come to Compton. We have a hotel and casino. We can partner with them and make sure that that is a hotspot right off the ninety-one. There's, we have an airport, we have our college, there, we can give a Compton experience. We can partner with Carson and Inglewood and do something regionally. But there is a lot of opportunity to make sure that um, we are prepared. Um, for the global stage that's gonna be here in just a few short years.
Was that all that you wanted to add? Honestly, thank you, thank you.